Could skate to another country? I did not. I will so note it next time. We'll file a... Would somebody be so kind as to make a motion, move a motion to approve the agenda before us, moved by Counselor Ainsworth, or seconded by Counselor Heen? Sorry? With the addendum, with that massive comprehensive addendum. Mason, you still okay to move that? Thank you. Counselor Heen, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Are there any disclosures of interest based on the material within our agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. There are no presentations and no deputations this evening. We have minutes from the regular council meeting July 18th of this year and July 31st, excuse me, and August 1st of this year regarding our special meeting with counsel for our 2018 to 2022, and hopefully well beyond that strategic plan. Is there a motion to approve that? Thank you. Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Heen. Correspondents, we have one correspondence item tonight. Oh, sorry, but I see a show of hands to move, to accept the minutes, please. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. One correspondence item, and I believe we have, the motion, I think, is to accept those that have been put forward by the... Is anybody going to speak to this? Or, you can afford the... Sorry, the motion's on the screen. If somebody would be so kind as to, well, let's maybe fill in that space first. And I think there's been a request for a member of council. Is that true? Does anybody want to speak to this? Shed some light on this?
Um...
If you don't, I don't know who is.
Um, the Senate themselves, I believe, requested that I be listed as the counselor, seeing as I've been a part of the OIAO committee as well, the youth committee, and definitely an honor to be considered. And I think it's actually quite funny that as I go from 29 to 30, kind of getting out of youth, I'm being included in youth. So very honored, and hopefully it'll keep me youthful for a couple of years to come. So yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, man. 29, I think you're over the hill already.
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, no honor to be included, and yeah, it's, I leave it up to council to determine, make a final determination.
Thank you, Counselor Fallas. I did know, I heard some conversation going on earlier, and Counselor Ainsworth, I think, was looking for, wondering if there is an opportunity for an additional member, Counselor Ainsworth, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. Through you, Mayor Clark. That's not necessary. We did have a brief discussion earlier about this. I'm quite happy to see Counselor Fallas, and I'd be happy to move this motion to get him on there. I think he's going to be a good appointment to this committee, and I also just wanted to congratulate all the members who did come forward. I know Counselor Fallas and I were talking briefly earlier just about how diverse the range is from folks who are in grade eight all the way up to grade 12. I think they're going to be a really welcomed addition to the city in regards to a governance structure, and hopefully, I'm sure they will bring some pretty amazing things forward to council in the future, and if they ever need help, I think for many of us around the table, that they're more than welcome to reach out. And I hope to sit in on a couple of these committees, committee meetings as well, just to see how things are going and to check it out, and it's always exciting to see youth get engaged within our community. So thank you so much, Counselor Fallas, for putting your name forward.
Thank you very much. So I have a mover and a seconder, Counselor Emon, and I will wait for the motion to hit So indeed, moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Emon, that further to the request of the Aurelia Youth Opportunities Committee, in a letter dated July 21st, 21st, sorry, 23rd, July, in a letter dated July 23rd, 2019, Counselor Fallas be appointed as the council liaison on the Aurelia Sunshine Youth Senate for the remainder of the council term. Is there any further discussion on this? I would just tackle a couple of the comments made by Counselor Ainsworth. I've met a couple of people that are on the youth senate. They are very excited to begin that process, and indeed, I'd look forward to their input and recommendations that they may bring forward to council in the next, in the next while. So now I will call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And there you are. You're off and running Youth Senate. We raised the average age significantly by including Counselor Fallas. And we now have a motion on the screen with respect to our budget committee. Is there a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by Counselor Cloustra, seconded by Counselor Sepola. Moved by Counselor Cloustra, seconded by Counselor Sepola, that report, number 2019-5, a budget committee, now before council be adopted. And just as a reminder for those watching here and at home, reports and consent agenda, those two aspects of the agenda often work very similarly in that there will be multiple items within a report that are passed at once, and these are usually items that were discussed, in this case, a few days ago at a council committee. So they've been presented, discussed, debated, and voted on to move forward. So that's why they're more or less enshrined in, with multiple aspects to it. Is there any further discussion on this particular report? Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the Soldiers' Memorial Hospital Reserve be established for the, providing future contribution to the new Aurelia bill. I'm just questioning if this may be a little, I'm a strong supporter of the hospital, totally support the idea, but is it a little early for us to even think that we don't have a location where it's going? We don't know if the province is even going to support a new hospital yet at this time, and to put that kind of onus on the taxpayer at this time, I think is a little premature. So I'm just wondering if, if we can wait a little while.
Sure. My response from the chair would be, and on the hospital board, and then Counselor Emon may want to weigh in as well, he probably knows the health file as well as anybody around the table, is that this particular motion doesn't, doesn't have a monetary value attached to it. So this is really just, and I'll look for staff to concur, is just setting up a mechanism to which we could begin contributions to at some point. I will suggest that staff have been very prudent in the past in doing something similar when we are anticipating possible significant expenditure coming up. I think of firefighters, negotiations with the OPP. I think of actually the operational costs of the recreational center, and these were forethinking and progressive moves that staff did. So this is really just the initial step of that. So at the moment, I understand there's no contribution, financial contributions at this point. That will come later, and I will ask perhaps Madam CAO to weigh in on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct. At this point in time, what this motion does is essentially set up that reserve, and then during budget, council will give consideration to the monetary amount that would, if any, would go into that reserve for 2020.
Thank you. It's okay, Counselor Fallas, let Counselor Emon weigh in, then I'll go right back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Yes, that's exactly right. This is just setting up the mechanism, but I might point out, I attended an Aurelia Ontario Health Team meeting today, and the resolution that we passed in support of that initiative several months ago was instrumental in the Ontario Health Team being included as one of the 31 health teams in the province out of 150 to move forward to the next stage. It was deemed to be quite unique that a municipality would be standing up and supporting this. So I think this in itself, though it doesn't relate to that issue, relates to the fact that the hospital is going through a series of phases with the ministry, and to the degree that our municipality is aligned with our hospital and with the healthcare, generally speaking, in our community, in support of these activities, will be seen by the ministry as very positive. So notwithstanding, you're right, Counselor Sepola, that the actual funds would be released sometime in the future, assuming that the hospital does get permission to proceed and that there's an agreement to its location and its magnitude, all things suggest that at this point, if that were to occur, that our municipality would need a number of years of economic planning in order to participate in that, and I think this just puts in place the vehicle for that to occur, so that we won't be running to catch up and burdening our taxpayers with huge expenditures at some point without having thought it through. So I would strongly urge us to continue down this path.
Go, Sepola.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just that one phrase, that soldiers' memorial hospital reserve be established for the sole purpose of providing a future contribution for the new Aurelia bill. I have no problem with what you're saying, Counselor Emon, but I think my conversations with the hospital administration was that they're going to be at least 15 to 20 years before, 15 years anyways, before the hospital's even considered building it. So I'll support it, because I do believe in the hospital and everything else, but I'm just wondering, so we haven't set a sum, or we haven't set a percentage that we're going to put away? That will be made later by council. Is that correct? So that phrase that I just read says that we establish a reserve. So I'm not sure how you can establish a reserve without any monetary funds.
Well, my understanding is that you can establish a reserve with a zero balance, and the financial contribution and contemplation, should it happen, will take place later.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? And I have a further motion on the screen, that report number 2019-9 of council committee, now before council be adopted. A mover and a seconder. Counselor Ainsworth as a mover, seconder. Counselor Lauer. Thank you. Thank you. And as such, moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Lauer, the report number 2019-9 of council committee, now before council be adopted. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ainsworth.
Yes. Through you, Mayor Clark. I just wanted to thank members of council for their support the other day in regards to item number two, which is about us essentially going forward and lobbying to get the OSUM Conference held in Aurelia in 2021, or the Awesome Conference, as you like to call it. It will be awesome when it is in Aurelia in 2021, and I just wanted to thank members of council for their support on this initiative. I know there's a lot of work by staff and others that went into this, and I'm quite excited to have this discussion at the board this coming week. So hopefully it goes well for us.
Thank you very much. I will say, Counselor Ainsworth, any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the screen. Is there a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Cloustra, seconded by Counselor Ainsworth. That will get it on the floor for discussion. Thank you. This is with respect to the potential of having solar panels on our, on our, over the gymnasium section of the Recreation Center, 255 West Street South. Moved by Counselor Cloustra, seconded by Counselor Ainsworth. A clause eight of report number 2019-8 of council committee, now before council be adopted. Just so members of council understand, and Madam CAO will look for a nod of your head on this one, if this motion is passed as it is, then there would be no action, correct?
Through you, Mayor Clark. You are correct. There would be no action on the solar panels. Yes.
Thank you very much. I will now entertain discussion. Got Counselor Ainsworth, Counselor Emon, and then Counselor Sepola.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm fully in favor of this motion moving forward to receive as information. I do think it would be great to have solar panels on top of the Recreation Center, but as staff have reported to us, there are no programs at this point in time to make it financially feasible. I think in the future, if something does come forward, there's nothing that stops council from moving forward with those projects and making a profit of it and sending that message at the time. While, you know, we've been through strategic planning and such, and talking about other initiatives that we could move forward in regards to helping the environment and combat climate change and such, I think we're doing a lot, and we're moving in the right direction. And I just think that this one can wait a little bit into the future till it's something that's financially feasible for the city.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ainsworth. Counselor Emon.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. If I would have a seconder, I have a minor amendment to this, which would be to add the phrase "at this time" to the motion, somewhat for the same reason that Counselor Ainsworth is speaking of. I do believe that it's a good idea, but I go further than the fact that we may find incentives in the future. We have a number of organizations in our community who are currently working on a variety of strategies for sustainability, climate control, and things of that nature, including our own city, which is doing that in our assessments, planning, what is it, the cap, our facilities, and what do you call that? Assessment thing we're doing? Anyway...
Asset management?
Asset management. Along with your initiative, Mayor Clark, in the area of sustainability, I know our environmental people are working on programs related to the tree canopy and other things. I would prefer to have those mature to a degree where we're, where we're looking at a number of these items and potentially making a decision where our limited dollars could be best spent. And though this is a perfect example of an, of an activity that would demonstrate to our community that we believe in this, doing it a year from now will be no less of a statement, and will, at that point, we will have the comfort that we are, in fact, dealing with the priority or priorities that are most important for us. So rather than just cutting it off and having to go through the rigmarole of a reconsideration, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Madam CAO, that if we were to, at this time, sort of thing, would allow us to reconsider this at any point during this term.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. By adding "at this time," it actually does not require you to do a reconsideration, so it's a, it's a sort of clean process if you want to bring this issue back again for this term of council. No reconsideration will be required.
I can go one of two directions. I think I'm going to ask if there's any other discussion on the main motion first, then I'll ask Counselor Emon if there's a seconder for his proposed amendment. Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will second Counselor Emon's motion. Just questioning, have we had conversation with the group that made the presentation with us about, about just taking this as information? Because they spent a lot of time, put a lot of effort into it and everything else. Have we had that conversation with that group, and they, are they okay with, with us just taking it as information, delaying it for, for a while?
I can answer that question, but to answer that question, I'll probably have to speak to this. I can step from the chair if people wish, or I can make that comment here, but I'm glad to, so, thank you. I'm glad to step away from the chair if I need to. So the direct answer is, yes, I had a conversation as late as today. And yes, a lot of, a number of people have been quite involved in this for quite some time now, better part of a couple of years. So I called them because my thought process after a couple of discussions was to follow the process that I, that I say that we need to follow as a matter of due course, and that is to put this into the budget process against the other, the other issues that we'll discuss at budget time. So I got ahold of them and said, would you, are you, would be any great angst caused if it didn't go forward tonight, but it was put forward to budget? And that may give us some time to see if there's any funding opportunities. There is another stream of funding coming online from the federal government through the province, hopefully before budget. We're not sure of the timing, and it's around green initiatives. So that may be, this may be eligible for that. There's an article that I will, I will circulate, I think I've sent it to one or two people, about the large management company that owns Yorkdale Mall, dated 20,000 square foot solar panel installation on Yorkdale without any governance, government incentives, and found that to be a such benefit, they are going to roll out that project to a larger scale. And so I think there are some, some financial benefits and certainly some environmental benefits to, to contemplate this, maybe not today, but certainly at budget. So notwithstanding Counselor Emon's desire to, to change the wording to "as is," which wouldn't preclude us from bringing it back at budget, my recommendation would be to, to send this to budget, and that just really follows the process that we have in place. The, and, and I do believe that this does fit the discussions that we've had around, again, there's only the discussion level and the drafting of a plan level, but around sustainable growth and reducing our carbon footprint, which was part of our strategic discussions. Anyway, I, so I hope that answers your question, and it probably did more than that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, why, why are we not recommending it to budget rather than just taking it as information?
Well, option two, I believe, is, is if somebody wishes to bring option two forward, we would have to defeat this motion, but I've got another suggestion on the floor first. So I will entertain discussion around the main motion first, and then I'll go back to Counselor Emon and see if there's a seconder for his, his amendment. So I've got Rob, Pat, Tim, and then I believe Jake.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Clark. I'm supportive of receiving this information, and I'm also supporting Counselor Emon's motion to amend as well. I think the main thing here with OPDC not buying into this program right away, because there is no incentives from the government, I think we also have to look at, yes, we're going to be a large consumption of electricity, but we're also going to be, have a large consumption of natural gas on that property as well, and it'd be nice to get some kind of program from the government to have some alleviation of natural gas prices moving forward as well.
I do indeed hope that there are government programs in the future, but there is no guarantee of that. Counselor Heen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I was just saying that I would be very supportive in seconding Counselor Emon's motion.
Thank you. Counselor Lauer.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I'm still in favor of going ahead with this. I like the idea. I think we're talking about waiting for future opportunities here, and I can't see any of them coming. As, as has been pointed out, this, this kind of thing is almost getting viable without government investment, but in this case, I like the idea of leveraging 90,000 or whatever it would be, and around there, for a $300,000, potentially a $300 project. We would allow the guys who have been working on this for three or four years, and certainly I'm not hearing anybody in that sustainability group speaking out against this. You know, I think in all fairness, if we're going to support it, let's support it, let them get going on it. They've got a long way to go to, to raise 200 and some thousand dollars. I love the educational part of this, the fact that it would be tied into the rec center. So I'm not in favor of receiving this as information to make.
Thank you very much, Counselor Lauer. Counselor Fallas.
I was just going to say, I echo the, the sentiment expressed by Counselor Lauer and Mayor Clark. I think, you know, this is an innovative idea, something that should be celebrated, and something that really allows our, our city to progress and allows us to develop our infrastructure. And I think, for me, this is a no-brainer, and I know for others it is as well, and yeah, I will be rejecting this, this as it is read. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands in the air. Counselor Emon, I think I heard maybe a seconder, Counselor Cloustra, I'm not sure. Counselor Emon?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. There were several, I think Counselors Sepola, Counselor Heen, and Counselor Coustre, all indicated they would second, but you make a compelling point. I did read the article that you circulated, and I do agree that Oxford Properties are making a significant investment after experimenting at Yorkdale with the potential to reduce their electric consumption charge to the province, in other words, generate their own electricity. The one major difference that was inherent in that is that the, the square meter size of the shopping center is a quantum difference than a rec center, and that they can actually generate enough electricity on acres, literally acres, of rooftop, which is equivalent to acres of farmland that we're, where you, you know, we've got a fairly narrow footprint, and, and as the results, the report said, that it, there was no net saving. I mean, the costs of doing it were offset by the costs of saving that we would get. And so it becomes more of a statement of, of intent and direction that we were, as a community, wanting to take, which I fully agree. But again, it does require an investment on the part of the city. It commits us potentially by going, I mean, it doesn't commit us at budget time, but I'm just wondering if by budget time, your task force will have had an opportunity to sift through the various multiple initiatives that they've been talking about and come to us saying, you know, this is one that we are really behind in terms of supporting that. If that's the case, if you believe that's the case, then I'm more than happy to withdraw my, my amendment and, and go through the budget cycle. But I would reserve my commitment to support the project itself to the ability to adjudicate whether this is the right thing for us to do at this time.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Emon. A couple of points. One is, yes, I believe Sustainable Aurelia is coming to do a presentation to council in September, where they will identify this as, as one of their, one of their projects that they're championing. Number two is, I believe the roof space that they, they did the solar panel experiment on in Yorkdale was about 20,000 square feet. The, the, the ability to expand that further is, you're right, is acres and acres, but it was, it was successful enough at 20,000 square feet that that was the roadmap they are using to now expand that. And our recs, our gymnasium is 14,800 square feet, although I think the actual solar panel area is slightly smaller. So, but it's just not quantum difference, that's all.
You're absolutely right, but the, the point they made was they used the 20,000 as a test, and what they found was the power that they could generate extrapolated by the square meters of the rooftop would in fact go a long way to covering the, the electrical costs. Our, our electrical costs are high, and we have no ability to expand it beyond, you know, the 14,000 square feet, square meters, how many ever we are. So I, I mean, I don't think there's any question, short of the fact that we're in the sunshine city, and therefore we obviously will generate more electricity than they would in Toronto, but the, I don't think there's any question that the solar panels do, in fact, do what they want to do. It's just that, is that the best way to utilize the city's dollars in terms of driving the message to our citizens about climate change, about what's going on? I mean, maybe there are stormwater initiatives that are better able to... I mean, maybe there are stormwater initiatives that are better able to control, you know, respond to climate change as opposed to change climate change. So, that, that's all my, my concern is. It's not to, to in any way diminish this, and I do appreciate that the hard work that they put in, I guess, it needs to be acknowledged in a timeframe that's probably more specific than this, but I, so I am willing to allow it to go to budget to have those discussions at that time, but.
Thank you. And that's, I, I think, the merit of the process we have in play at City Hall is that when we have something come forward, that, that we, we do move it towards budget where it can be adjudicated against not just other demands on, on the funds, but certainly other environmental demands as well. So, I appreciate your comments. Is there any other discussion on this? Counsel Spoh.
Through you to our CAO, so where do we stand now with this, with this motion? Can we make it go to budget and still accommodate Counsel Eamon's proposal?
So, what I believe I heard from Counsel Eamon, if you'll, I mean, is Chair or Counsel Eamon, you can go right ahead.
My point would be, I think it would be simpler to go direct to budget than to, you know, take a back alley route. So, I would be, my, my point is that I, I'm more than willing to withdraw this amendment at this point from, as a mover of it, if that's still appropriate. And if it is, and if defeating this motion, and, and if there's a second motion that we could go forward with to budget, then I'm, I'll be comfortable with. I mean, if you sneak something else in there, I'll be.
Yes, Mayor Clark, that's correct. So, this is on the floor right now, and if a member is looking to bring an option to refer the item to the 2020 budget deliberations, we have that option prepared, but this motion would need to be defeated first.
Never, sorry, I didn't know the microphone. Never hesitate to ask a question. Please never hesitate to ask a question. Anyway, so, any further discussion on this motion? All in favor. That is summarily defeated. Is there anybody willing to move, bring forward the motion, or move the motion on the, on the screen? Moved by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Spoh. I'll wait for that to hit me softly. Moved by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Spoh. Further report, FM 2019-01 dated July 11th, 2019, from the facilities and special projects department, the installation of solar panels at the recreation center be referred to the 2020 budget deliberations, which will take place this fall. Any further discussion? Counsel Spoh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is, this is a no-brainer, as somebody said around the table. By doing this, and we will have one of the best recreation centers anywhere in Ontario, at least that's my opinion, and with this, it'll put us right on top throughout, throughout the province and throughout Canada, that we will be able to produce our own electricity and, and cut down expenses on it, on the operating expenses eventually. And with the help of the group that's been formed, I think that's a no-brainer, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counsel Spoh. Any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor. That is carried. I have a notice of motion, and this, I will just go through the, how this works. That was very kind of you, Ms. JR. The, this is a motion being brought forward by a member of council, I believe, and to, it is a reconsideration motion. And just a reminder that you can discuss the merits of bringing a reconsider, having a motion reconsidered, but not the actual motion itself. So, with that being said, is there a mover to, to bring this forward? Thank you. Is there a second or Counsel Reinsdorf? And a reminder that this will need a two-thirds majority, which was six people to, for this to pass. So, moved by Counsel Fallus, seconded by Counsel Reinsdorf, to be carried by two-thirds of members of council, that council reconsider resolution 2019-96G regarding Building Hope Project from the council meeting held on May 6, 2019. Any discussion? Again, just on the, on the merit of reconsideration, Counsel Fallus.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I guess, just speak to it, kind of explain the motion. Can't even speak to that. I guess it, it is following discussions we had earlier on in the year, and it was something that we were referring to. So, I thought, you know, this is something that we can kind of keep the legislation open, and, you know, just provides, just provides for future considerations, considering this particular issue on a case-by-case basis, and it's just removing the word "fine."
No, sorry, it's going to stop right there. I was giving you, I was giving you a great latitude there, I think.
Sorry, Steve.
But that's, so.
Sorry, scratched the, the last one there.
I'm guessing you're arguing in favor of having this reconsidered.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Counsel Reinsdorf.
Yes, through you, Mayor Clark. In regards specifically about the reconsideration, I will be in full support of that. I think when information does come forward or presents itself, that it's, you know, within our right to have those discussions and talk about that new information, and I think, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to discuss that. It might go the same way, it might not, but at least we're going to have the opportunity to have that discussion.
Thank you very much, Counsel Reinsdorf. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor. That is defeated.
I, I just wanted to say thanks to the Clerk's Department as well for having, helping me draft that. It's quite a complicated document, breaking it down.
Well-articulated. Counsel Fallus. Consent agenda. I'll wait for the motion. Whoops, I won't wait any longer. Is there a mover and a second or Counsel Reinsdorf? There's a mover. Counsel Spoh is a second or? And moved by Counsel Reinsdorf, or seconded by Counsel Spoh. Process? Oh, sorry, thank you. No change in direction? So, if it's okay, Counsel Eamon, I will, I will call the question and allow, go right to you. I want four, Ted, four. Sorry, Counsel. Okay. Moved by Counsel Reinsdorf, seconded by Counsel Spoh. The council adopt the recommendations as set out on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council on August 15, 2019. Counselor Eamon, would you wish to discuss any part of this particular consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I would like to discuss briefly item number four, where Simcoe Skoka District Health Unit is reporting the impact of the preferentially directed changes in the funding of public unit, health units on the municipal levies, which is anticipated to raise our, our contribution by a significant amount of money. The, I have, I have a comment, and I have a question, and for our representative on the health unit, but my comment is that this is an example of a direct download of expenditure from a provincial program to the municipality, notwithstanding that the municipality benefits from these programs, and, and that's well-understood and well-accepted, and it's also a recognition that we have historically contributed to this program over the years. The introduction of this change in the funding was accompanied by the reorganization, the announcement of the reorganization of the health units to eliminate, according to the, the minister at the time, duplication that exists from having a whole bunch of health units to not having a whole bunch of health units. Theoretically, there, there's duplication. We at county council, as you recall, this past Monday, were the recipient of a, a report that increases our contribution to long-term care because the, the province has as well in, has reduced its contribution. In that case, the county said, we're going to make up the difference for the coming year. However, during the year, we are going to do an audit of our processes to see if we can in fact reduce our cost of operation to accommodate the reduction in the funding we've got. So, my question to Counselor Spoh is, why is it, or is the health unit doing a compar thing? Are you ranking, rating your programs to determine whether some programs are not as valuable as other programs, so that you could cut the least valuable programs and save money for the taxpayers generally? And when can we expect the rationalization of the health units across the province to, to show the impact of the efficiencies that are expected? Is this a forever increase, or is this an increase that is for this year so that the health units have the time to do what they should be doing, and the province should be encouraging them to do?
Counsel Spoh.
Thank you, Counsel Eamon, for the question. Right now, we don't know whether it's even going to be us amalgamating with York. If that happens, then this might apply, or we could stay the same and it may not apply. But I think by cutting it down from 30 some odd units down to 10, it's going to create some really hardships for, so, our course was either cut programs or increase the amount of municipalities. I think what's happening too is the provincial government is, is passing down some of the expenses that are going to the municipalities for healthcare, and it's not just the health unit that's going to be involved, it's going to be involved through hospitals and so on and so on, and I think you're quite familiar with that. So, right now, it's not definite. This was a letter of information for, for the municipalities, and that, they're just giving us a heads up. And we have a meeting with the Honorable Doug Downey and the Jill Dunlop to see what we can do to offset some of this. So, stay tuned for more information in, in the next month.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Spoh, I think you wanted to speak to item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our CAO, or to yourself, Mr. Mayor. I just want to read one of the, the municipalities play a key role in implementing these policies through local official plans, zoning bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. The government is consulting on draft policy changes to encourage the development, increase mixed supply housing, protect the environment and public safety, reduce barriers or costs for development, support rural, and this is the key, support rural, northern, and indigenous communities, and support the economy and job creation. Will we have an opportunity to, as a council, to make some resistance to the province? Because they're looking for some consultants, and I see that the minister is Mr. Steve Clark. I'm not sure if there's any relation, but I'm just wondering, will the council have any input into what, what this may cause?
Yes, the honorable minister has made a very good attempt at having a, quite a wholesome name, but he came one letter short. Madam CAO, would you mind commenting on Counsel Spoh's question about the consultation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The consultation process closes October the 21st, and staff are currently working on reviewing the information that they have to produce from their perspective comments that would be worthy of returning to, to the province. So, there will be a report to council, I would suspect sometime in September, with this sort of outline of the comments that staff have, and then any further comments that members of council may have, and that would then be submitted to the ministry.
So, certainly, Counsel Spoh, you will have an opportunity to, to weigh in on, on the report.
Thank you. Just to supplement, I didn't see a lot about the affordable housing part of it, so I'm hoping that that also is included in this, in this scenario as well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Spoh. Counsel Reinsdorf.
Through you, Mayor Clark. I just wanted to thank Shannon Jackman, who was on the Command of Rewards Committee, and Lisa Avery from the Aralia Public Library Board. It's always wonderful when we have people serve on these committees, and I know they are resigning from those committees, and I just wanted to personally thank them. I know I got to serve with Lisa in the past, and I just wish them all the best in the future. And then to remind folks within the community who are listening, that means there's going to be openings for these committees, so make sure you stay tuned and reach out and try to get involved.
Thank you, Counsel Reinsdorf. Indeed, very familiar with the contributions of Ms. Jackman and Ms. Avery and the respective committees, and both have been involved for quite, quite some period of time with a, with a high deal of contributions in energy. So, well said. Thank you. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? I'll call the question. All in favor? Carry. Thank you. Is there a mover and a second or for the bylaws contained within our agenda? Moved by Counsel Spoh, seconded by Counsel Campbell. That, bylaw number 2019-90, amendment number 113 to traffic and parking regulation, bylaw number 200755, thank you, as amended, 250 Machadash Street South, 3281 Monarch Drive, State and Main, and 3287 Monarch Drive Mister Lube, formerly 8000 Highway 12. 2019-91, a bylaw to amend Chapter 109 of the City of Aralia Municipal Code, Aralia Youth Opportunities Committee. And 2019-92, amendment number 114 to traffic and parking regulation, bylaw number 200755, as amended, University Avenue. Is there any discussion on those proposed bylaws? All in favor? Carry. Thank you. And a bylaw to confirm the proceedings at this very meeting. A mover by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Fallus. That bylaw number 2019-93, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of this council meeting dated August 15, 2019. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Be enacted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carry. Thank you. Are there any announcements? Counsel Spoh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish one of our co-counselors a happy birthday. Having served with Counsel Lauer for many years, he hasn't changed much, other than he shaves once in a while. So, just like to take this opportunity to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Counsel Lauer. Any disclosures of age? No? Okay.
No, I, I appreciate the good wishes, and I appreciate young people around the table that are making me feel older, and the old people that are making me feel younger.
I have Counsel Reinsdorf and Counsel Eamon.
Yes, through you, Mayor Clark. I just wanted to also wish Counsel Lauer a happy birthday, and just to remind, I think, Counsel Spoh, that Tim has actually had a beard since I think he met his wife, and I don't think he has since then, according to what I heard before. So, that's exciting. But just on another note, quite excited to be traveling this weekend with Counsel Campbell and Counsel Cloostra to the AMO Conference. We're going to be representing the city well and making sure we make some good contacts. We're going to be representing the city well and making sure we make some good contacts and learn some good information, and I look forward to bringing that back to folks.
Thank you, councillor Ainsworth. Councillor Eamon?
It's always a pleasure to have my colleagues acknowledge how much younger they are than I. I think, though, that just because one's birthday falls on the date of a council meeting is not enough excuse to avoid a councillor who last Saturday had a birthday. Wasn't it last Saturday? And councillor Heen, who is catching up quickly with, in Ward 4, the oldest average age of councillors anywhere in the city. But councillor Heen, who not only had the joy of a birthday, but of a major family wedding, and guests from multiple countries around the world visiting for their wedding in Toronto, and then subsequently, the in-laws, new in-laws coming here to Arrelyia and visiting our city. So congratulations to Pat on our behalf as well.
Congratulations, both of you. And councillor Heen, you were very coy on Saturday, as we took what we're referring to as the Chinese delegation through the Recreation Centre. You gave no indication that it was your birthday. Anyway, happy birthday, Pat. And Pat.
And actually, we have one more birthday, because councillor Eamon's birthday is coming up in the next couple of days as well. So happy birthday to councillor Eamon.
Just when you thought somebody was catching up to you. Well, if we put the candles on the cake, we'll alert the fire department, that's all. All right. Anyway, I hope I have the youthful attitude you do, councillor Eamon, when I, if I should get to your age. Any further announcements? Any further birthdays? Yeah, really, that was Frank, Dave, John. I remember Dave had a big birthday a couple of years ago, though. Open public forum? I'll give everybody in the audience a few minutes to decide whether they're, okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Spoh, seconded by councillor Heen. All in favor? Have a safe and wonderful night.